Welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Kentucky Board of Education. Meredith, please call the role.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams here.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth here.
Jamie Bowling. Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery, I'm here.
Julie Pyle.
Julie Pyle here.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe here.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, I'm here.
Lee Todd.
You muted Dr. Todd.
And now, Lee Todd is now here.
Okay, great, thank you. Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble here.
Diane Woods.
Diane Woods here.
Lou Young.
Lou Young here.
Alyssa Riley.
Alyssa Riley here.
RJ Osborne.
RJ Osborne here.
Secretary Link, President Thompson. Okay Chair, you do have a call.
Thank you so much and thank each of you for taking time at this really, really busy season to join for this very important special meeting of the board. We, today we will consider the profile and job description as drafted for us by our search firm at Pearson and Jacobson. I want to give many thanks to Dr. Joel and his team for taking so seriously the important data that we provided through our engagement with our various constituent groups. These data, we felt represented the heart of the matter from their perspective as we translate into the work of the board. So, the draft candidate profile and job description were shared with members in advance. The proposed candidate profile is as follows. Under experience, we expect to find a candidate with knowledge of Kentucky's public school system and the broader education landscape within the Commonwealth. We expect successful experience as a student-focused educator and educational leader with an understanding of the challenges and opportunities that our state presents. We expect a deep understanding of learning theory, curriculum, and instructional practice, as well as an accomplished professional with a proven track record in managerial roles demonstrating exceptional leadership skills, strategic vision, and the ability to inspire and guide teams toward achieving organizational excellence. In terms of skills, we expect the candidate to present strong communications and relationship-building skills with the ability to engage diverse statewide stakeholders in the planning and implementation of programs designed to improve opportunities and outcomes for all Kentucky children. This will include listening to the voices of students, teachers, families, and communities. Further, we expect the ability to work collaboratively and inclusively with the Board of Education, state educational partners, the Kentucky General Assembly, and school district leadership in developing and implementing the strategic goals of the states. Further, we expect in supporting dispositions, we expect to find a commitment to and passion for inspiring each student for a successful life and improvement and improving learning opportunities for historically underserved children. And we expect a dedication to maintaining a visible and approachable presence while exemplifying dignified leadership. I will ask the board to entertain a motion to approve the profile of the Kentucky Commissioner of Education candidate and job description. If I have such a motion, we will open the floor for discussion.
This is Lily Osborn here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Todd.
Holly Bloodworth, a second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. The floor is open for discussion of this profile and job description. Dr. Joel, do you care to comment on your, on your work?
Chair Robinson.
Quite commendable, yes. Did I miss a hand?
I'm sorry Chair Robinson, it was, it was me Lou. I was just going to commend Meferson Jacobson and Meredith and the comms team and you for the first cut of this job description, this advertisement if you will. And I thought it was, the tone was really right. I felt like it was comprehensive and that we struck the right chords in terms of setting a clear expectation of who we're looking for in this process.
Great, thank you so much. Are there, are there further comments? Yes, Steve?
I was looking at this application and maybe as a typo. Just didn't want to send it out, maybe it's not, but in the very last page, the third paragraph up from the bottom, right above the picture, it says the application material should include a letter addressing how the candidate's experience is ma- I assume that'd be match instead of math, could be wrong.
Yes, and we did see that typo, so that has been corrected, thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Great catch Steve, great.
I figured Meredith was on the ball or had that down though, I didn't.
Yeah. Uh, Dr. Joel, you want to speak to this at all?
Well, just to reiterate what you already said Chair Robinson, and that is that this, this does represent the, the current thinking in your state and amongst the board as well as your, your major stakeholder. So, we tried to encapsulate what we read. You have already acquired a bunch of feedback and you know, we intend to obtain some more just to make sure that we're reflecting what's currently occurring. But we're in good shape and this is a very good profile and we believe that we can recruit and certainly vet applicants against this. And many of the things that, that we discovered through, that I, reading the materials that were forwarded to us, will point the basis for some good questions during the interview process from members of the Board of Education. So, we're ready to get it posted, we're ready to start receiving applications. And as we talked about last time, by beginning it now, if we can get this all framed up and posted to our office, we can enlist it by next week. And then we'll be working with staff and the committee with regard to next steps. But it'll go pretty quickly, but I do believe that shortly the word will be, will be out. We're excited to get to work with you.
Thanks. Julie, you have a comment? This is Powell.
Yes. Yes. In this, the sentence above, experience, the last line is partnering with educators to deliver on this promise. I'm wondering if it should just say educators or if it should be like shareholder groups? So it's more encompassing and it's not just still siloing educators? Should that be expanded in partnering with pretty well, you know, stakeholder groups? That was one question I had. The other one was, I'm wondering if on the page where we talk about United We Learn, in the United We Learn discussions in the last meeting, it was really important to embrace people's cultural wealth. On, I would like to make sure that we're really expressing, embracing our ill families and diversity. I know it does mention that in the one, underneath the skills part, it does mention diverse, but I think in the United We Learn, maybe mentioning something about embracing people's cultural wealth that they bring to the table. And then just on the last page, it mentions, you know, confidential inquiries and nominations and the material should be directed to, but there's not an email address or a website. So like, if somebody were to send this out, who do they contact or where do they contact? The actual contact information?
That's a good catch, we'll add.
Julie, we can make those updates. I actually received from Dr. Joel's team the contact information after we had secured the draft. I know they were working to get the website to us, so we will include the website where applications can be submitted as well as two contact names from his team for people to email inquiries to directly. Absolutely, we can add in that language to the United We Learn description. And then I think Chair Robinson, changing the word to stakeholders there in that intro seems appropriate if, if the group agrees.
So, we have a motion on the table and if those two items, the change, using the term stakeholders and mentioning in United We Learn, the cultural wealth of all of our citizens, if those can be accepted as friendly amendments, we'll proceed.
So, what the board actually is charged with approving is actually just the candidate profile and description that you read. The other materials kind of fall under advertisement, kind of promotional supporting information. So I think we can make those amendments, certainly those were friendly amendments, but really what the motion is specific to is that candidate profile that Chair Robinson read through earlier.
Okay.
I made the motion so I can accept those two changes as friendly amendments.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. The motion to approve the draft candidate profile and job description is on the table. Shall I call the question?
Question.
All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, we're on, we're in a virtual meeting. Dr. Brewer, please call the role.
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, vote yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Yes, Holly Bloodworth.
Jamie Bowling. Patrice McCrery.
Patrice McCrery, I vote yes.
Julie Pyle.
Julie Pyle, yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Diane Woods.
Diane Woods, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, yes.
Chair, all members have voted.
Thank you so much. Now, Dr. Joel, you started doing a little rundown on what happens next, but please, if you wouldn't mind, give us a brief overview of the next steps that the search firm will be taking to advertise the approved candidate profile.
Okay, so we will, we're going to, we'll connect with Dr. Brewer hopefully sometime today or tomorrow. We'll get the, the edits and final draft form, we'll get those to the Matt and Jake, Meferson Jacobson home office. They'll prepare the posting and we will get it on our website first part of next week. In addition to that, we'll, we'll go through, we, we would recommend that we go ahead and list this with the American Association of School Administrators as well as Education Top Jobs. Those are the two most widely read, that's, that's Education Week, most two widely read material, publications in the country for superintendent, superintendent-like candidates or applying for positions, ala Snapsey, there's, there's three or four others that we'll, we'll include. And, and we'll get that out so as quickly as we can. Sometimes there's a week or two lag with them doing the publication, but I, I will assure you that people are paying attention to this vacancy and we will get the application up very, very quickly and they'll be able to begin compiling their information consistent with the application requirements. We'll, we require three letters of reference from, from each of the applicants and then of course, full credentials, licensure, and everything that goes into, you know, making it a legal process. We will also begin to acquire names of potential candidates, we'll be reaching out to them. And if you have some people in your state that, that you've, you've been impressed with or you believe should be considered, let us know and we will certainly make that outreach. I also have a meeting, a national meeting coming up in, I think in the state of Kentucky at some point, maybe the latter part of February, first part of March. And we've, we'll, we'll just blanket your state as, as best as we can. And I know you've got at least one former or maybe sitting superintendent that's on your board that is going to have some familiarity with acquaintances. We would ask that you, you refrain from having conversations with candidates once we do go public with the posting and then will all questions through us or to us and we'll deal with it. That'll just keep the, the process very, very pure. You will likely get lobbied by people or groups and again, it's just so much easier and, and professional if you just refer that off to us. And our contact, we're very easy to contact, there's four consultants who are going to be working to search, our emails and our contact information will be very prevalent in the application materials. And then we'll work with the committee on finalizing some dates because one of the dates that we would like to, to, to make sure that we put on the calendar and, and don't schedule any conflicts is that four-hour meeting where we're going to bring in then our recommended shortlist of candidates that most closely align with your profile. And they'll be duly vetted, we'll have them do videos, sort of introductions, and then we'll work you through a process of selection and determining who you would like to bring forward. So that's, you know, really it in a nutshell, we're, we're going to, to really work hard on this. We're excited and you don't have a lot of competition right now. Mississippi will be done here very quickly, in fact, I think they are done. And then I know that Baltimore or Maryland is another state that, that is beginning to initiate process. We're not involved in that one. So we, you've got our undivided attention with regard to this very, very important position and we're excited and ready to, ready to work forward.
Wow. Now, remind us the closing date for applications for this position.
Uh, thank you Chair Robinson. February 16th is the dead, is the deadline and we're, we're pretty absolute with that. So, you know, if, and I'll just tell you what our rules are. If somebody begins the application and doesn't quite complete it, we might extend it for 48 or 72 hours. But we ask that all materials be in because we're going to need the greater part of three weeks than to do our, our due diligence with the vetting. And as I mentioned to you, last time we spoke, that begins with a, a one-hour conversation with each of the viable candidates with us, sort of a pre-interview. And then of course, we, you know, we go deep on the references and we go, we go, we go significantly beyond the listed references. We'll, we'll be calling in our range of contacts in your state and your region just to make sure that these folks are who they, they claim to be. And we, we, we will disclose everything to you. We ask, a final question that we'll ask in our vetting is, are there any skeletons in your closet? Anything that could emerge in social media that would be an embarrassment to the board or an embarrassment to you or our firm? And we, we get all, we get all the confessions you could probably imagine. So, we'll pass it on to you. So you'll know when we meet with you, you'll have all the information that we have. You'll be able to do your own little research of Googling and during that meeting, we'll bring in all the application materials so that you can peruse them and, and we'll work you through a selection process and who you want to interview. Would ask that, you know, in the next couple of weeks, be thinking about some questions you would like to ask during those formal board candidate interviews. And if they can be collected, and I think Dr. Brewer will likely be the person that will collect them, get those off to me and we'll, we'll make sure that we bring them when we come in to present finalists. We'll go through the questions with you so that, you know, you have a sense of what, what the question represents. But even more importantly, which you might expect for a good response. So, it's a comprehensive process, it's going to go fast and, you know, we think again, you're going to have a lot of interest in this position. Think that, that, that people that know Kentucky understand you've been working very, very hard to, to move, move the outcomes in a positive way for your students and for your communities. Oh, last thing that I neglected to mention is we, I've been in contact with K-12 Insight, which is a national community engagement company. And we'll be framing up a way to gather some additional stakeholder feedback and input. And then we'll be, we'll be working with the committee with regard to the General Assembly. And we're thinking right now, unless there's some better ideas, that we will do an exclusive survey with those folks at the policy level so that they feel that they've, they've taken, they've had an active part in, in this process. And then we'll talk with you as we get further along in the search, you know, if you wanted to include them in any other capacity when you get down to that time where we're ready to represent finalists. So, that's it. It's going to go fast and I, I love the fact that we're going to be starting soon because that'll give the Christmas break, that'll get, that'll provide some time for candidates to really begin framing up their materials and doing some research on you. And, you know, you can expect that the folks that we bring forward will be very professional and it'll be well-versed in Kentucky and well-versed in your work and certainly put the best foot forward, as you will as well.
Are there other questions, any questions for Dr. Joel or his team?
A couple of comments on some of the text that does matter. We'd rather talk about more serious things first, I guess, but there's a couple of things my old English teacher would want me to say.
Well, please, on the text, make sure you share any of your comments or observations with Dr. Brewer or Dr. Joel directly and so we can incorporate any further edits of the advertising material. I mean, we've approved the, sort of the candidate profile and job description, but there's, there, there will be additional accompanying materials that we'll be developing over time. So, and always perfecting, so don't hold back. There is, I think, some interest in knowing the various groups that you might survey. We certainly do not want to overdo it and we don't want to underdo it. But the, certainly, you mentioned the community survey, this community engagement kind of approach. And that sounds like right on, right on the money. So, would, what about the KDE staff? They've, they've had an opportunity to speak to the two questions. What's your feeling about additional information?
You know, the more information we, we obtain, the better it is, right? So, absent, absent being there personally and doing individual interviews with folks, perhaps we can set up a Zoom meeting with KV staff and KD staff and, and have a conversation with regard to that. We typically ask three questions. One is, tell us why this is a great job and what, what we should tell candidates that might be interested. What, what strengths, traits, characteristics, skills do you believe this candidate, successful candidate needs to possess in order to get this position? And then the third one is, what are the issues? What are the, what are the predominant issues that the next Commission of Education's going to be confronted with almost immediately upon arrival? So, we, we can ask that in a variety of ways, but certainly we would like to schedule a meeting with KDE staff and any other stakeholder, individual stakeholder groups, advisory groups perhaps that you, that you utilize. We could set up a, a meeting with them as well. It's about an hour of conversation and we just, we just want people to express themselves freely and, and to let us know. But you know, what we're looking for, of course, and what K-12 Insight will provide us is, is really, you know, what's, what are the trends? What, what's the summary information that we need to know? I mean, you're always going to have people on the, you know, on the perimeter, if you will, or the extremes that, you know, believe the, something's really wrong with the system or it's the best system in the world. We're just looking for, what's the consensus, right? What, what do, what's achievable? What, what do people want to see this next leader of your state focus on and ultimately be able to demonstrate accomplishments with? So, that's kind of where we're going and you know, I, what I would like to do is maybe have a conversation with the committee once, if you, if you're continuing to move along those lines. And we'll work very closely with Dr. Brewer, who's fantastic by the way. And we'll, we'll get it framed up. But I promise you, anybody that wants to participate will get an opportunity to participate and you won't, you won't lack for interest in, in the ultimate outcome of this.
Thank you. This is McCrery.
Meredith, would it be possible just to send out an email to our teachers and faculty and staff and say, here is a place that you can share with us, what you would like to see in a commissioner? I know we've done our groups. I'm just thinking down the road, so often teachers say, well, I certainly never had any input in this. And I think it would be a, a really good move to give them the opportunity to have a voice.
Yes, so I, I think the plan and we'll work with Dr. Joel's team, that K-12 Insight survey that the firm will develop, I think the current plan is to have a survey for general stakeholder input that will link on the Commissioner's search website, so we can share it there and it will be pushed out so that the firm can gather that information. He was acknowledging that we may develop a separate survey for our legislators to have input. We know that that's something that was recommended throughout all of the feedback collection that we want to be sure we have a strong collaboration with the General Assembly, so that will likely be a separate survey. But we will have that opportunity for anyone who's interested to provide feedback to the firm. And that's really important information for the members to have when you are in interview phase to sort of be thinking of that kind of expanding profile. So we have sort of the criteria that you approved, but as you're interacting with potential candidates and are starting to get closer to a decision, you know, which of the individuals most closely matches what is emerging as the priority, for priorities. Julie, do you have a question for me or for Dr. Robinson?
Um, I guess for either of you. Will the service be available in different languages?
We can check, I, I know that we have the option to do some translations through our comms team, but we will check and see what capacity we have for that, but that's a great idea. Julie will certainly make notes.
And I believe, I believe K-12 Insight has some of that capacity as well.
Perfect, okay, that's great.
Yes, Mrs. Woods, did you, yes, Diane?
Okay, I'm on.
Yes, you are.
Okay, what has been done with the information that we've already been collecting? Is it being collated someplace, it's in a document or on a website someplace that we can look at that information? Because I want to be sure that people understand that we're going to be using that information also as we begin these discussions. So where is that information?
So that was shared with the search firm and actually, that was included in, in an email that I sent to the board members. It was embedded in the email. I actually, I sent a few of those documents to you today, Diane. So those, that's where those materials have sort of been collated. So yes, so that was reviewed and synthesized into kind of the proposed criteria that was approved. But certainly, we're going to continue to collect feedback. The survey that has the two big questions that we asked advisory groups is still active on the search website, so that is still open. We'll continue to share that. But then this will be a new feedback survey that will be developed in collaboration with the firm as part of our services that they have agreed to help us with. And so that will be pushed out and that, that will have more detail than, than the two questions that we've been using right now.
Thank you.
So, we're going to be making really heavy use of the search website to keep folks kind of up to date and give them access to information that they may want to reference throughout this process and encourage the, what, the channeling of information to and encourage the, what the channeling of information to the search firm. Because we're now getting into a phase where that, their, their access to this information at the earliest point will be most useful. I am going to, Dr. Young, did you have a comment? You're muted.
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering to Patrice's point, if on, if, this probably goes without saying, but if we could ask the comms team that on all of the press releases that go out today and every time we're publicizing something about the search, that they include a note to stakeholders that this is a link where you can register, provide your information individually in a survey format.
That's a great, great observation. And I think that, you know, working with, I know the KDE team and I know how it works pretty collaboratively. So we'll be linking and leveraging throughout this process. I would like to actually move to another, another topic, another aspect of this. I propose that KBE establish a special committee called the Interview Committee for the purpose of reviewing and evaluating responses to the commissioner vacancy posting. Following review and evaluation of responses, the committee shall recommend to KBE a set of finalists for consideration by the full board. The committee chair shall determine the necessary meeting dates and locations. Following selection of a set of finalists, the committee shall terminate. I propose that Joanne Adams, Patrice McQuary, Julie Powell, Randy Poe, Diane Woods, and Lou Young serve on the committee with Diane serving as chair. May I have such a motion?
This is, this Steve Trimble, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Zulee Todd, I'll second that.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion of this motion? Yes, Dr. Young?
Oh, I'm sorry, I failed to put my hand down earlier. My apologies.
This is Phil Atwater, yes.
Yes, is this, does this committee look at the things after the, the firm has, has gone through them? Like, because he was saying that they vetted them first. So does this committee take what they have vetted and then further vet it? Or is this simultaneously? I'm not sure where this committee falls.
This committee would have the responsibility of vetting the material of all candidates advanced by the search firm and developing and, and doing an interview with them based on the consideration of the materials and their insight into the board's interests and priorities. They would develop the interview questions for each of those candidates. There will be some questions in common. They would develop the additional questions and then be responsible for bringing to the full board a set of finalists. So they would operate as a second step after the search firm does the initial screening. Other questions, comments? Then I will put the question, all those, please, I'm sorry. Dr. Brewer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Could you unmute Holly?
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Patrice McQuary.
Patrice McQuary, yes.
Julie Pyle.
Julie Pyle, yes.
Randy Poe.
I vote for everybody except myself.
Dr. Poe.
Good, good try.
Oh dear, one more time, Dr. Poe, what is your vote?
My vote is yes.
Okay. Uh, Doc, uh, Dr. Robinson?
I vote Sharon Robinson, I vote yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, I vote yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, I vote yes.
Diane Woods.
Diane Woods, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, I vote yes.
Page here, all members have voted.
Thank you so much. And the motion carries. I appreciate everyone's willingness to serve. But I also want to remind the board that if you're interested, we can arrange access to candidate information of working through Dr. Brewer and, and our, our search firm. If you want to develop specific questions for any of the candidates, then you'll have an opportunity to do that working through them. And I can't emphasize too much the importance of confidentiality as we go into this next phase. If any candidate were to lose confidence in our ability to keep their confidence, we could, that would, that would really harm the entire search. So board members, we are entering the most sensitive time of this, but the most important and richest moment for advancing our interest in selecting our next commissioner. Are there any other matters related to the search that any board member wants to bring up at this time? If not, I will certainly thank you for your time at this really busy time of the year. Appreciate everybody's cooperation. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Steve Trimble, I'll make that motion.
Patrice McQuary, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Brewer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Adams.
Joanne Adams, yes.
Holly Bloodworth.
Holly Bloodworth, yes.
Jamie Bowling. Patrice McQuary.
Patrice McQuary, yes.
Julie Pyle.
Julie Pyle, yes.
Randy Poe.
Randy Poe, yes.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, yes.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, yes.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, yes.
Diane Woods.
Diane Woods, yes.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, yes.
Thank you all. Please be safe and have a, enjoy the holiday spirit.